Is being recorded for transparency and record keeping, please be mindful as we proceed.
Dear heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this wonderful day that you've given, this dear Lord, but just to ask that you guide and direct us in this meeting that the things that we we plan on, the things that we sign off on will be for the best of the town of Edwardsport, and we'll give you the praise and the glory for that. Amen.
Amen.
Want to make some questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last, last meeting minutes. Questions or changes?
I wish it all, I'm not even sure if things change, can you make them, should make a motion to approve?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Financial report.
As of the end of August, so August thirty first, twenty twenty five, the general account had fifty three thousand four hundred fifty one dollars and seventy three cents. We received it in one thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars and forty one cents and dispersed three thousand nine hundred sixty four dollars and fifty nine cents. The street department has a balance of four thousand ninety nine dollars and forty four cents, received it in six hundred twenty two dollars and thirty two cents, dispersed five hundred twenty seven dollars and fifteen cents. Local roads and streets, four thousand six hundred forty seven dollars and fifty three cents, received it in one hundred ninety one dollars and fifty one cents, no dispersments. Water balances two hundred twenty seven thousand six hundred thirty nine dollars and thirty cents, received it in twenty four thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollars and thirty seven cents, dispersed ten thousand eight hundred twenty eight dollars and fifty seven cents. Sewer account balance is fifty four thousand eight hundred forty one dollars and ten cents, received it in nine thousand ninety six dollars and forty three cents and dispersed seven thousand four hundred seventy four dollars and forty cents. As of today, the checking account sits at two hundred ninety six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and thirty cents. Savings account is eight thousand five hundred thirty one dollars and fifty nine cents for a total of three hundred five thousand forty five dollars and eighty nine cents.
What's our last call?
Three oh five.
Three oh five, zero four five, eighty nine.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to put that on the report.
Questions or additions for initial report?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to go ahead and we'll do the budget and the additional appropriation? So, this is the first meeting on the twenty twenty six budget. We are proposing to adopt a budget in the general fund of eighty thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, forty one thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. Local roads and streets is three thousand. For motor vehicle and the CCI, we're going to run everything out of the general for twenty twenty six. And then the second and final hearing will be next month. Whenever I had my meeting with the Department of Local Government Finance, we needed to do a little bit of additional appropriations for the NVH. Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine dash two, additional appropriation ordinance. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the twenty twenty five annual budget. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Edwardsport, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to laws governing, governing the state, passed and adopted by the town council of the town of Edwardsport, Indiana on this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty five. Fund account is NVH. The amount of additional appropriations is four thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. Just unexpected repairs.
Motion.
Excuse me?
You mean a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to accept it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um. I guess next on my agenda is an upgrade to the software that is being used. Right now, we're using Keystone, which is working great. It does all the required reports for the state board of accounts. Earlier this year, they combined with a company called BSNA and they have come out with a product that can be cloud based. I've made up a list of pros and cons. Pros, the data can be assessed anywhere. A customer portal is included, so the customers can access their bills and make payments online. The bills can be sent electronically, which is a huge time saver. The systems are integrated with each other, which will decrease the clerk's workload of having to manually input the data. Right now, if I receive the utility bills in, then I have to manually put it into fund. The security of the data and backup in case of like a computer failure or natural disaster, fire, what have you. All of the town's data will automatically be stored in the cloud. Automatic updates. And then I thought about internal auditing, because a council member could have just login information to check the financials at any time. Obviously, the cons, the biggest is going to be the cost. But if we do this before the end of the year, we will be saving over twenty six thousand dollars. It is internet dependency. It's not been a huge issue here in the office of not having internet, but there have been a few times when the internet has been down. And then a learning curve. The biggest reason for going with the cloud banks would be the utility side, being able to email. The bills will be a huge savings, because right now we're paying for the postcards and postage, and postage keeps going up. I mean, it's not going to be to spend five, six hundred dollars every couple of week, or every couple of months, just on the stamps. So I'm sure everybody's wondering what the cost is going to be. So this includes the first year of licensing, the migration, new module project management and product configuration and training. So they are proposing thirty eight thousand five dollars. I feel that we can split that between the utilities because of the utility portion of this. They are giving I thought I saw like fifteen days of training. So that might go down a little bit. And then I asked him about Keystone, because we do have Keystone until April. And if we get all moved over before April, they will prorate Keystone. So we'll get basically a refund for the most that we're not using Keystone.
You have that an idea, what Keystone costs a month?
Annually, it's a little over nine thousand dollars.
So you're looking at about seven hundred dollars a month.
I did get with the state board of accounts. Asked him if we could charge if people do not sign up for the email. We can do that to help offset the cost of postage and the the cards. We would just have to rewrite the, the rate ordinance. And this, sorry, go ahead.
Good. We're talking about the utility, the small.
Right, so in the utility module, there is a place in there that we can put work orders and keep track of the work that's being done on on lift stations and meters and all of that. So it would, it would eliminate the utility.
Is that thirty eight thousand? Is that for the rest of this year, or is that every year it's going to be?
No, so annually it would be annually, it would be sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars. So it would almost be double what we're paying now.
So what does the thirty eight thousand encompass?
It includes the first year of sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars. It says new modules, annual fee, one thousand five hundred and fifty. And new modules, project management and product configuration, one thousand dollars. And implementation and training, eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. And it would be broken up. If, or the fees would be broken up if this is accepted, a thousand dollars would be due immediately. And then the second payment of eighteen thousand three hundred and five dollars to be invoiced at activation of customer site. And then eighteen thousand seven hundred to be invoiced upon completion of training.
Did you happen to read Matt's report?
I skimmed over it, yeah. I know, we have a lot of work to do at the sewer plant.
Yeah, I have no, no idea what it's going to cost again. Right, from Matt, just know what we have to do, but.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a long list.
Yes.
Danny, have you been involved with that, some of that?
It's a bunch. A bunch. I guarantee it's a big bunch.
Remember?
I mean, it's a whole smooth box. The whole, everything coming in, the rock coming in, the whole thing has to be replaced.
I went down and looked at it, I've seen it going up, so.
What's going on, it's, it ain't going to be, I probably get. Too much other, right? Too much other, I mean, other than the coming in, the digester and the aerators, I mean, that's the whole plant pretty much.
That's, yeah, that's it.
You know what I'm saying, the whole coming in has to be replaced, everything. It's gone, it's rotten, I mean, it's worn into itself right now.
That is, what's the, what's the, what's the total number of years on that plant? Was that installed, keep, around what year?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Well, like, ten years, you know, so.
Yep.
Our system, all the, all the issues with pumps, you know, the grinding pumps. With that, I'd probably say yes, I think, but I'm, just me personally, I think that we.
I'm the same way, I think we need to table that until we find out exactly what we've got here.
What if we did it out of water?
I think we're in a lot better shape with water since we got all hydrants done, we got we got the water, the second water tower all refurbished. We've got diesel generators put in at both places, at the water plant and down to pumps. So we look a bunch more secure there than we do anywhere else.
And he said, tell him I have no clue of price.
Pardon me?
He happened to text me and said, tell him I have no clue on the price.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I read it to.
Yeah, that's what I.
Forty, but, but.
He must have listened.
Yep, it is.
He just sent me a text and said the audio was good, because audio wasn't here he did last month, so.
What do you think?
From a security point, I think cloud base is the way to go. And from ease of use and functionality, I think this is probably the best. Integration wise and everything's going to work together. Software's expensive.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what you you can work hard with it, or you can work easy with it, and.
And I know, like I said, right now they're offering that discount, I mean, if we wait till after the first of the year, you can tack on another, almost thirty thousand dollars to that price.
Well, I know that software is expensive. And I know that the, the bad thing about expensive software is it lasts about a year, and then there's another latest and greatest. And at some point in time, we're going to have to say, this is what we're going to go with and stay with. It's, it's not going to be a couple of years from now saying, well, this one is forty thousand, and it's more, but, you know, we can't keep doing that.
I think the cloud base is going to be around for a good while. I mean, we use Keystone since I wanted fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, somewhere around in there.
I, I think I'm going to have to go along with Lonnie to think that my, my book will be tabled right now. It's based on based upon trying to ensure that we get to town with the two things that we're looking at there, and that's water and wastewater. Now we know that wastewater is in very tough conditions right now, so. And I don't even know what the cost of any of that will be, so if that, you know, exceeds everything that we have in wastewater, then what we're going to do, I mean, when you look financially, we're out of that, so. I'm not, I'd be more than glad to discuss it, but whatever you guys think.
Yeah, we need to discuss it if we need to. It's what we got in, in sewer, fifty, fifty four thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars.
You said we can take it all out of water?
And then if we implement a charge like a dollar or two dollars for the ones that don't sign up, you know, give us like a time period, because I was thinking I can hold a community meeting to show them how the portal works.
Do you, do you have any kind of feeling at all, how many? We got about a hundred and fifty customers? Do you know possibly about how many would, you think that would pay through using computerized electronically to emails or across line?
I have to do a report to them, let me see, um, Matt.
I need a paper bill.
Ah.
I need a paper bill.
Paper bill, you want?
Yeah. Because if I don't, like, Connecticut right now is doing the email thing like you guys were talking about, and I get so many emails and then I forget about it, and I can't find it in my email, and then I'm behind, I get a late fee. And then I'm angry.
My family would use it.
Pardon me?
My family would use it.
Here's what I need.
Nope.
Yeah.
So last year.
You're spending most of your time looking in your phone for your emails and stuff than you do anything.
Well, there would be like, almost like an app that you would go directly to.
Yeah, but then some of those apps charge you to pay on the app, to pay for it.
It don't act, there's a lot of, a lot of time.
I'd rather have a paper, you know, rent card.
Well, I mean, and that would be an option. But last year I, or I had a dear report in last year in twenty twenty four. And we received thirty seven thousand three hundred seventy four dollars and sixteen cents through pay gap. So there are people that pay online.
Or, or do pay.
Mm-hmm. And two hundred and sixty two transactions.
Well, I know that you guys know a whole lot more about the software than I do. And that's, you know, that's one thing that I'll have to have to put right out front, but the only thing that I do see is I see a big bill here.
Say a huge bill.
That's
So.
That's basically the entire plant we're talking about. That Danny, that pretty much.
I guess the whole coming inside, yeah.
Yeah, well, the working, the working.
And then you got coming in, you got staying in, you got going out.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So the, basically the, the complete workings of the inside of the sewer plant is, is what we're talking about.
Coming in part, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's what separates everything.
Yes. So.
Goes into the next building.
And the blue.
And that's if you don't have another supplement pops up.
Yeah.
So what we could do is, could we table this until next month to see if Matt comes back with surprises?
Surely in a month we'll know.
See, probably, yeah, we're going to have to know within a month, I mean, it can't go like this.
I really think to make decisions for the town, I think that's the smartest move.
Okay. Because my goal was to get this implemented by April, whenever I take my huge vacation, and then I'd be able to log in.
Matt was very adamant about getting this on, with Matt. He wanted me to grant him about getting this taken care of, Matt. They said you can't wait.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
One other very soon, like a house.
Yeah.
And what I, I mean, consists of, and you guys think if, if that's bad, how far, how far are we on? Other stuff. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
What, what else is going bad, I mean, that's the coming in, so.
Then we don't know.
Right. I'm here to have, to get a whole.
You know, control whenever we get to street and then.
Um, that's why I just did a drive-in today, with a thousand gallons, and we can just wait till.
Yep, let's, let's wait, just, let's do water and then we'll move into sewer, so.
All right.
Water, Earl's not here today. Been approached by a landscape company, working on the culvert project on sixty seven. They're wanting to fill their, what, seven hundred and fifty?
Nine hundred and fifty.
Nine hundred and fifty gallon water tanks, and when they're doing their landscape work. We're going to charge them, Patty's going to meet with the company, show them where to fill up at the ballpark, and we'll make a little money off of them, fill them, spray water, so. Anything else for water?
I think I did say more of the air conditioner that restored up there. Let me see that Lily, remember they had the air conditioner out, I think that's that we can, we can pump, we can, and then.
That was in the.
Yeah, so that's, that's important, so that's, that's actually a work.
Okay.
That's the most for water, moving on to sewer. Danny, you want to?
The plant, obviously, we've been talking about. That's going to be apparently a really, really big job. Of course, it's going to be contracted out as well as above us, above our manpower and everything, so.
Equipment wise?
Equipment, everything you don't mean, so, maybe contracted out, so that's going to have to be taken care of. We've had some, we've had a bunch of issues going on, on the pits and grinders and floors and everything, I think we've got them all pretty much taken care of for the most part, I mean, we've, we've got some band-aid on some things. We're going to have to go back and, and get the pits, when Matt's available. It's nothing that he can do by himself, or nothing I can do by myself, it's, it's got to be a team effort, so.
Exactly.
But you can't chance made in a pit by yourself.
Exactly, now, exactly, you're talking about the pit back here.
Back behind Rachel's.
How was that and all that now?
Uh, the flots are in, they're not in right, you know what I mean, they're, they're in it to, to where I don't have to go twice a day to take care of it and stuff like that, they're turning it on, turning it off, but they're not running underground up through the boxes like they're supposed to be, so the lid is open. And that's not.
Not good.
Not good, you know, I mean, we've got cones and hot tubs around.
Yeah.
But we've also got three kids and one autistic kid living there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so that's something that's going to be addressed very soon. As far as the other issues we've had around town, I think most of them are pretty much fixed. We've got to replace a couple of pumps. I've got, Patty's house is done, it's online. The flooring, everything's done, back there with backfill, everything's fixed. Morgan's house is done. I've got his pit in, wiring, pumping, everything, it's done, backfill. I was going to take some pictures, I took some pictures, I don't know if you guys understand, I'm going to take some. I'm gonna take some pictures, you know what I mean, of everything. We did a label, a lot of stuff on his, um, as far as. Air locking issues that were happening everywhere all the time, um, we, we found some ways around that. So we don't have to deal with air locking anymore.
And that's how, how'd you find out?
Uh, by, by just taking some brains, you know what I mean, and then these guys that was back here, um, doing Maddie's. Um, they've worked with Graves for thirty years, with Graves plumbing them out on, but they've done big systems like. Terra Hope, Farmersburg, Brazil, and other stuff like that, and I just went back there and, and just, and just got with them, you know what I mean, and figured it out. He explained a lot of stuff to me.
Did they, they, do they have their electronics inside the web?
No, we have no more electronics inside the web, build a web, so there's no more connections inside the web, which is gonna do away with everything short now. Um, if the, that, uh, floats are gonna go back, you can't, you can't, there's no way around it, you know what I mean, a float will not last forever, so when a float goes bad, the water level comes up. If you got electric connections in that pit, you're done. I mean, it's, 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 it's a no brainer. So having electric connections in the pit is stupid, so we're finding a way around that, and the way around that is to mount the box. Outline the pit and have the wires just coming straight up into the box, so there's no, there, I mean, you can overflow all at once, you can't short anything out.
That's like the one I would look back down.
The one I do have to look at, yes, and that's how Maddie's house is done too. So these are the new Liberty boxes and Liberty pumps that we've got. And then we're gonna start installing. Anything that goes bad from here on out, as we fix it, we're taking all the electric connections out of the pits. And we're doing a way with airlock valves, we're putting a new one-way valve in, which allows it to shut off and not backfill. But does not allow a tear out, because, I mean, how many culverts do I go on? And airlock, you know what I mean, I gotta fish down there with a rod until I find the airlock valve, hit it, it unairlocks it, I turn the pump back on, it pumps down. It's. It's just not a good system.
Wasn't, is not verbal.
Was not verbal, yes sir, so if we do away with that, then we don't have. We don't have that, you know what I'm saying, and if we do away with electric connections in the pit, then we don't have that problem anymore.
Yep, well, uh. Who's gonna talk to Matt about, who finds out the total cost? I can text him, just uh. If he's looking for a contractor right now to do that, uh, there's more information we have in the winter off, I think.
Yeah, he said he's, he's trying to find that out now, I mean, he's, he said he has no idea of the cost at this point right now, but he will. He will figure that out soon.
Said he's talking to the guy at Ben's End, so he's also talking to Ben's End Welding on some different things, so.
Yeah, it's gonna take some. Yeah, it's gonna be a lot easier, a lot involved with that, I mean, it's not just.
Good.
So, um, and then on wastewater, I wanted to talk to you guys about, I already talked to Matt about. Um, I've been printing under him for five years, already, um, he's going out my print sheet. Um, I would like it if you guys, um, Ivy Tech provides a class for wastewater to get a license. Um, I don't feel comfortable just taking the test right now, I feel like I'd like to take a couple of classes, and then help the council if you guys paid for my classes. I'm sure the cost, I'll bring that to you very soon. The cost of the test is thirty dollars. Um, I must refresh the class would be, um, Matt's on board with it, I talked to Matt today, um. And I would like to uh, try to give my advice.
Well, what you, what I think, just me personally, if you find out what those classes cost, Ivy Tech, I'm gonna care about.
Yes sir.
Once you find that out, bring that to us and we'll go up there.
Can you, can you do that online?
I don't know if it's in, in person fashion, it's an online class, I mean, myself, I would personally like to go in, you know what I'm saying? And learn a little bit more, fresh out of learning online, I've learned a lot from Matt, I know a lot, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
But my self-confidence, you know what I mean, isn't, you know what I mean, where I needed to be. I can run the pumps, I can run the grinders, I can do everything, that's not a problem, and I can pump, I can electrical, I can build. But the testing is my question, you know what I mean, the testing is a walk.
There'd be some math in there on that one.
Yes, yes, and I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'll get somebody to mail some math on it, if you want it.
Yes, Lonnie can.
Yeah, yes sir, we're all, so I just.
So, um, I'd like to get that, do that, and then again, um, I think that's all I have for wastewater.
About street, you got an extra department?
Street department, I've just been trying to get everything going, actually I've been working more on the sewer than I have anything. Um, I've got the park tilted up, um, I got seeded and everything today, I've been busting my butt up there, trying to get ready for this win. They're gonna have this weekend, so, so we got running coming this weekend up there, um, I'll have to know, I have the beds refreshed, mums. And everything planted up there, it'll, it'll be pristine, it'll, I'll be ready for the weekend, I promise you that.
Good.
And uh, trying to keep everything going around town, keep everybody happy, um, I've been down to a, I'm sorry, sorry. Check, I've been down to check, um, he is property, um, combined, uh, bucket against the property back there where we had the spill.
Yeah.
And issues with the lift station.
Yeah.
Um, they're worried about the spillage and everything that come into their ditch, it goes across their backyard. So I walked it with them and um, told them not to bring an excavator down there and scrape the ditch out. Like I did the ditch in front of my house when I had a spill down there, because of the smell, of course the contamination, you know, I mean, I spread lime down there like. I was supposed to, but it's, it was, it spilled for so long that it's all in their ditch.
Yeah.
I think I spilled the ditch out very well.
Ditch up.
Made my grandson, about what, two weeks ago, we got out there to leave his big hand to get out because it was overflowing.
So I'm gonna go down with an excavator and scrape their ditch out for him, get a truck and stuff down there.
We, we, we want to apologize about that first of all, because I, I know that uh, it, it went on for a long time, but based upon what we heard as council members. Is that, that the lights, the lights wasn't working down there, so we just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
That happens, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we're not mad, I, I would like it to be carried.
Sure, yeah, totally understand.
And, and makes my skills love it down there.
That's the next thing I put on the agenda here. Matt just texted me and said everywhere online has contract for quote, but no straight up price list. I found a custom screen that's ranging from six thousand to nine thousand. Right to work the best for my math, I'm gonna save it guys. That's ranging from six thousand to nine thousand, that's just the screen, no plumbing or flow splitting box. So that's just one small piece of the big puzzle that needs replaced, it's six to nine thousand.
I'm glad he's working on it, I'm glad he's working on it, whatever, uh, whatever comes up about it, uh, you bring it to the town council, and Matt, uh. He can't bring it to the town council, bring it uh, through an email to us, or uh, write it like he's got here, or through you, and we'll take it from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll text you, I'll text you that for a long time, you text us.
What's there walking in here? Get some equipment back there on their property, I'm gonna dig their ditch out.
Yeah.
And of course, we gotta get the floats inside the pit, so we can get that pit closed, because we've got three pits back here, one of them's autistic.
Yeah.
And last thing we need, that's the last thing we need. So, um, that's coming up, we need to get that done, I'm gonna shoot that to you guys, it's a yes on all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I've got.
Did you agree with that, Keith?
Yeah, absolutely. I just had. This is the cost of, me and Patty, um, talked about. Um, the cost of. Spraying.
Mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes for a season with like ten thousand dollars to have somebody come in and spray, it's gonna be ten grand to have somebody come in and spray for one season, that's April to October.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is a new full-size fogger, that fits in the back of the truck, fourteen hundred dollars. For just a fogger.
It does have to be licensed?
No, you do not have to be licensed.
There's cert, there's only certain chemicals you're allowed to use.
My phial, you're allowed to use my phial and uh, um, either an oil-based or water-based, and Matt does both.
Okay, so diesel will mix with diesel?
Yeah, diesel or water, you can do it with water vapor or diesel.
Well. I did this, I did this for a second years, the, the problem you have with the water.
It doesn't stick.
No, no, you have to, you basically have to use the diesel, but then the problem you have with that is getting the kids to stay on the pole.
Cause they wanna ride the bikes behind them. I know, I was one of those kids.
So will I, kids. That's what's going with you.
Well, that's one of them, I second that. But, that's a good deal, um, the cost of the chemicals is not gonna be a fraction of what it's gonna cost to have somebody spray.
Ten thousand dollars.
So that was my next pitch to you guys, to see if we can move forward on that, because I get numerous, numerous complaints, I mean, every, I know you guys don't hear it.
Yeah.
But you guys know, I mean, you guys outside.
Yeah.
You guys know mosquitoes are in town, so I mean, I have to.
Mosquitoes are my friend, I've lived with them for seventy-four years, sure, man, split.
You could have them. Coming down this way, we got coming this way, we got a lot of skills, and we used to have a skill. Then years ago in town that they spray, and then they come, and then they come to that culvert and spray in there trying to kill them skills. Because I'm either going this way and this way behind us, we go outside, we sit on horse, we gotta use fans to keep them skills off us, I'm serious.
What about, about the season?
Yeah, well, I mean, we've worked with putting bat washes and stuff in too, and that's, that's another thing that we can do, I mean, with, with spraying. And, and firing trees for hummingbirds and stuff, keep mosquitoes as a natural, natural remnants, you know what I'm saying, but right now, we need. Instant gratification.
Well, well, you're, you're getting, by the time you get that thing here now, but the, you're gonna be at the end of the mosquito season anyway. So that's something that we can plan on maybe for next spring, look at it maybe for next spring, but I doubt we'll get anywhere by the end of this year.
The prices could go up by the end of next spring.
Yeah.
Good, they could go down too.
If we, if we buy it now, we'll be ready for spring.
Yeah. Budget wise this year, I, it's not in there, I mean.
That would come out of what fund? That would come out of what fund?
Well, it would have to come out of general because there's nothing in street.
Who's sure you're done for?
I'd rather do that.
I mean, we've got everything coming out of general now.
I think it's a good idea, but I, I guess we'll have to table it till the next year. I don't mind, I do thank you.
Patty says we can't afford it, so I trust, I trust Patty.
Hate to be the Debbie Downer, but.
You stick it out your pocket, Keith. It's a good idea, we've talked about it before.
I agree, it's a, you know, need it.
I definitely agree with the mosquito control, but I mean, for one, we can't afford that ten, ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars. And what about the chemicals, how much would they cost?
We get from, uh, handling nitrate and they were, I can't remember the exact cost, they were less than four or five hundred dollars.
And how long does that last?
I mean, that's like ten gallons, I think, so that's gonna be, I mean, close to the season, I mean. If it, cause the rate of it, let's see, this is the rate. One point seven two gallons. So, and that's an hour, so how many hours do you think it takes to spray this town?
About three.
About three hours, so you're looking at two, four, six gallon? Just spray it one time?
Spray it one time.
Okay. So, I'll get it all figured out.
That'll, that'll, ordinarily, you wanna spray more in the spring than you will say like right now. If you had sprayed in the spring and through the summer right now, you probably wouldn't have any mosquitoes.
Yeah.
So you can't let all of it, all this stuff ever down through there, as hot as it is right now, you know, you may have to, in the states like it is now. But, like, that's just, I'm trying to remember back from thirty years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, I'll give it all figured out the exact cost of, but I don't know, I mean, like I said, I've never sprayed the town, so I don't know what type of wood it's gonna take.
Yeah.
So, until we do it, we want, we're not gonna know the cost, you know what I mean, of what it is.
Yeah.
Right.
You know what I mean? And then. What else can I add?
PPE.
PPE, yeah, um, for the wastewater, me and Patty kinda got together on some of that, we definitely need to get.
Yeah, I've got, um. A case of bleach, uh, mutt boots. Um, waterproof, well, it says double coated nitro liquid PRM gloves. Um, and a zip-up suit, it's like a case of twenty-five, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that way, Matt, there's some there for Matt. Um, Danny didn't like the idea of a face shield, he said he'd rather have like.
In ninety-five masks.
In ninety-five masks.
I wanna remove around in the pits, I don't know, but, and I'm the one that goes into pits, Matt's too big to go in the pits.
So, I, I guess maybe about three hundred. Maybe forty dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars, cause I took the face shield off and Danny can pick up the mask at. Lowe's, so this is from USA Blue Book.
Yeah, well, I take that to the ground.
Yeah, I just didn't uh, realize.
Yeah.
But that's another thing that, um, these classes they're gonna teach me is, ends and ask for safety of that, because I've never known that. And I got, recently got sick, and yeah, they thought I had a C diff.
Do you, uh, do you not like that, that mask because of the fall?
No, because I can't move, I mean, when I'm in that pits, I'm scraping.
Yeah.
To move, and if I gotta bend down or anything, there's just that nasty, I mean, I, I'll be like, bing, 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 I won't be able to, I mean, there's nothing I. If I can just get something over my face right here, you know what I'm saying, and I wear, I wear glasses, so I'm not worried, so I can't get in my eyes. But if I can just get something over my face from my breathing, those fumes, I didn't realize how toxic this stuff was.
Yeah, true.
I've been doing this for five years now.
So if you're wearing a face shield, you cannot bend faces, that, okay, well, I, I have one that will not fall. I have one that will not fall, it's, it's very small and very.
I mean, I might try it, you know.
You, you're, you're welcome to try it.
When I get down in them pits, man, I mean, I've just never, and Matt's not a, um, love Matt's death, you know, he, he's not a. He's, he's, he roughneck, you know, I mean, he's just like, you know, I mean, he gets a little shit on his head, he's rocking off, going on, you know what I mean?
This is being recorded.
I'm just telling you, I think Matt, Matt's probably gonna laugh right now, I mean, that's bigger dumb stuff, you know what I mean, and I've never.
When you take those classes, that's probably what they're teaching, so you get on there and just.
You just wipe it off, right, most of the dead Eastman, that's the dead Eastman.
Motion proof, PPE purchase?
Yeah, I'm making motion proof.
I say.
I'm favor.
Hi.
Alright, and then, let's see the tank, um, I just got the tank going today, I did a dry run earlier today. I went down to the river and pumped out, um, about twelve hundred, fourteen hundred gallons of water into the tank. I wanted to do a dry run with water before I filled it with shit.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And make sure I didn't. And uh, everything went well, um, I took it up to the park and emptied, you know, I mean, twelve hundred gallon of water on the. Freshly till, spot where I just seeded and stuff today, it's watering down, so, um. Matt said, yes, it's true, I'm too fat fit in the pits.
I don't get the pleasure of telling him that you said he was a fat butt now.
I don't know, but it went good, um, so tomorrow, tomorrow, um, we just cut the cost from. What, six or eight thousand dollars, um, having our pit pumped out, it's fourteen or twelve thousand gallons, fourteen thousand gallons. It costs us six to eight thousand dollars to have it pumped.
Six thousand, I think that's what we're at.
Okay, so we just cut that cost down to fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, um, I have a, okay, fifteen hundred, that's gonna cost the jewel.
Yeah.
For the trips from here to Vickon. In my hours, which would be a day, I'm sure I can get it happening a day.
Yeah.
Two at most, so, that's a no brainer. And that's all I got, and I need to go, I'm making my main street.
Good.
Thank you, Danny.
Love you guys.
Getting anything else for streaming, moving on, Sheriff's Department?
Uh, I don't think we have much, a whole lot going on right now, other than the blue truck you guys, we're getting complaints about. Uh, he's been arrested, so it won't be a problem for a while.
Uh, he's been arrested, so it won't be a problem for a while.
What you got in hand?
Uh, I'm worried, a couple weeks ago, he got in the act.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. He made, I, I would, he called the act, everybody was calling. Okay, but he's, uh, he's, he's in Allen Hall. Okay, well, good to know, dude, I'll pass it along. But he shouldn't be a problem now anymore, at least. Cause he wasn't messing around in Biggum shortly after he said something, and then that's when he got arrested, so.
I wonder about his flight, then, for my.
Lee, uh, if, uh, if you could, uh, maybe increase the patrols on shipping street.
On shipping?
That's coming in from Freelemville and Edwardsport and vice versa, coming out of Albertport and, uh.
Albert.
Yeah, and Albert Street, because now they've got sixty-seven, as you well know, closed. They're, they found the shortcuts came in, and there's no slowing down.
Sure.
With eighteen wheelers and all, and there's, uh, the people that lives across us, from us, has got ten kids. I know some of them's growing up now, but it's just not a good thing, not moving their ground. I know they're making, so we get the hats put on, down at Patty's house, they got dust for everything, there's no one slowing down in it.
You're saying they're coming in, uh, to avoid the, the bridge disruption?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they found a way, you know, to get around that.
Well, most of the time when I have to go to Sandberg, it's, it, people have moved the, the signage out, out of the road right there at the bridge. And just going around it anyways.
They didn't do that this time, so I.
Yeah. Marked up the kitchen, yeah, cause I had to go around it a couple of times going that way.
Okay.
Sad part is, and, and I might not know everything there is to know about it, I thought maybe to begin with, that they were letting concrete set up around that culvert. But that concrete had to set up four or five days ago, that's been ready to blacktop for about a week.
Right.
And it's just set. Well, that's ridiculous.
When you're, uh, when you're working a contract job, you can, you can dictate how long it takes, and you, if you got other projects, they. I don't know who's doing that, who's doing that, that's right there.
I have no idea. But to, to see it sitting there, all it needs is blacktop put on, that's it, just needs to go to blacktop and they can open that sixty-seven.
But the, the speed part is what we're concerned about on, on, uh, Albert and on, and on shipping.
Okay, I got, I'll, I'll send out an email.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Is it anytime, or just?
It's all, all, all night.
We got mini bikes running down Second, Second Street, they start up the hill, maybe run the, maybe just back, let it run. Right down the hill.
Around the park.
Oh, you're talking to them.
No mini bike.
No, they're mini bikes, we got a bike first.
TSC, TSC kinda style, like I knew.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say it, playing with kids, my kids riding too, not on the street, riding on a green yard, yeah, cause I don't allow them to ride on the street. My kids are different kids, they didn't, they hold the slow down.
True, yeah, right.
Any of the different people, right?
Old business. Hold on, guys, we're moving on to old business right now.
Old business?
I can't think of anything.
Okay.
Uh, no.
Moving on to new business.
Yeah, what about, um, on, on new business, do we, uh, do we wanna have another town to clean up in the fall?
Sure.
Pick out a date, maybe in, uh, October sometime, and, and on Saturday, whatever date you pick out, I'll try to go out and talk to Maul and some of it, and, uh, or day, have it from eight o'clock in the morning till noon.
Um, is that something we can do tomorrow? Because I'll be doing water bills.
Yeah.
Either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yeah, you give me, you give me a date, and I'll go talk to him.
So, yeah, I have a question about that. Uh, if you guys do that, can you put me down on like a call list? Cause I'll get a, uh, truck, a trailer that I can pull a bunch of stuff off of. If we can get people's addresses, I think they swing by and have them roll their stuff into it, might get more stuff out of town too.
Oh, you mean the line to get it for, you mean?
I don't mind doing the, driving around, you know, using my tool and whatnot, I don't mind it at all, I'll donate my time to get some of the garbage out of town. Cause there's a lot of houses just have garbage around the houses. If somebody would offer, hey, put your stuff in here, except for like tires or whatever, I'll haul it off. I did it last time, we had one, I went to a couple neighbors around and had them throw some trash in.
What date is?
Thirteenth.
That's September.
Sorry.
I was thinking nineteen.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Oh, there are. Yeah, eighteen, eighteen, October.
Yep.
Eighteen, October, we'll talk to them in the morning, they're not back to Patty.
Yep.
And then the only other, other one you've got listed there is, uh, we've sent a proposal to the RDC to see if they'll, uh, uh, help us finance the paving of, of Shipping Street, and that's primarily right there by Mike Glones, we'd like to have that flared out there. Uh, cause we have so much eighteen wheeler truck traffic there, and then, uh, really pavement from there out to the edge of city limits, that's shorter past our house. We are, Patty, uh, I wrote, wrote it up, and she made it look so much better, and sent it off to, to Kelly and to the, uh, RDC, yeah, RDC, so we're, we're set on it.
Good at the town?
You know?
Me? Yeah, I brought that paperwork that I can call to.
Probably. We just tried out the pre-ke to see some friends. We started, we were discussing this about, uh, pre-ke.
Yeah.
And then we have the interference with Earl and waterline, and the sewer line.
So, uh, can you take a few years to live in that town?
There's a, there's a picture, but there's a little too much of that mentioned. Um, if you, if you see, like, one of those, or any of those, uh, it only goes a lot here. So there's a lot of people that's really close to this lot, uh, which is tons. So the easement is on the other side of the water, but, and then unfortunately, this is up here, which is ten feet, two feet of height. Here there's ten feet behind my house to that, twelve, twelve.
I'm good with it, I think, I don't see anything different.
Well, I, I went, I went to the attorney, and I had a new, and so it's conflict of interest.
Right.
And then I went to the coroner, and he told me what he was doing, he was asking for all kinds of stuff, and then I went, and he passed me the, 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 and then I made me the papers, and then I made me do all kinds of stuff, and I can't. And then Eric Kenny said, oh, why are you asking for all that? And I said, I don't know, I was asking for all that either. And he said that, um, you know, as long as we all signed it and stuff like that, it, it's okay for the job.
Should we have, you know, take a look at it, just not?
Yeah, that is.
Have our attorney look it over, just verify.
Okay. Just make sure we all have together, like, send all the facts.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you write your phone number down, and then I can call you whenever I get it?
That's okay, right?
In my office.
I got, I got right here, is that right? Eight one two, six nine oh, oh five nine one?
Yep.
Eight one two.
I have nothing to write on. Okay, eight one two?
Six nine oh, oh five nine one.
Zero five nine one?
Two.
Becky, right?
Nine five one, I have your number. My, yeah.
Anything else that works good in the town?
Where, you know where I live, they've got Mike Wilson across the street, and then you got, uh, Charles Earl joining to my property on that ditch. Uh, this winter, or probably before winter, after all the green stuff dies off, we're gonna cut down a lot of trees through there. And we didn't know if the city would want to put some rip route down there to make that look better, cause it's, there's a tractor tire down there, there's, uh, concrete, where they had posts, somebody threw them down there, uh, there's concrete blocks and other stuff down there.
Okay, that's on the, that'll be on the south side of your house, south side of your, your garage, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, where you talked about that.
It's, it's, it's just really bad up in that area, I just, didn't know if we can get that dug out, get all of that concrete and stuff out, cause it's like breeding area, if there's snakes and stuff like that, so I'll be, there's cavities underneath the concrete that's coming down there.
Okay, I don't see why they would take a look at that, and run the excavator too.
You and I will take a look, yeah.
We can do that.
Would I, would I go look at it? I don't see no problem with that, no. Did you want one, did you want one?
Okay.
Heck, yeah, I have a blue burner, I can use it later.
Carter's, did, did you guys have anything else?
No.
No, we can't play with mosquitoes and, and the ditch.
And the ditch, okay.
Yeah.
I hope you guys forget coffee and donuts. We did that, Matt came through available, before we got, I told him he came through the ditch.
Motion to adjourn.
Make motion.
A second.